She had locked it in.
Probably not during the winter. Right, I can use it during the winter. But summertime, it's cold and you're bad out there.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, the hour has arrived. I call this meeting over. And we've had a rather sad occasion among our public servants. Yesterday, Monday?
Tuesday.
Monday. I work here every day, so I lose the weekends. But yesterday, a officer of the police, Devin Scher, had fought cancer for a good long while. He was loved by the entire community. We all hit him trying to fight this situation. And we all lost, and he was lost yesterday. And it's been called our attention that we want to, as a community of public servants, with him, our loss, we want to bow our heads for a moment of silent prayer consideration for Officer, and he's known as, what's his name?
Eight one three.
What?
Eight one three.
Eight one three.
Eight one three.
And he's got another tag on him, and I've forgotten right now. At any rate, if you would please, let's bow our heads, and I will hold the conclusion of it for a word of prayer for him and his wife and family. Amen. And I'm going to ask Councilman Lane Johnson to give the implications.
Once again, Lord, I thank you for letting us come in there into our meeting today to handle the business of the city of Hazlerhurst. We ask you to bless us now and give us wisdom and knowledge to make the right decision. We ask you to bless those that are sick, those that are bereaved. We ask you to bless this nation, our soldiers, our God, in your name I pray.
Okay, next thing, we pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our individual liberty and justice for all. Counsel, y'all got any modifications that you want to address as far as the agenda?
Yes, I'm asking the council to go in a busy session for personnel.
Okay. Okay, we will honor the less designated on the itinerary at the bottom. So we will, for the benefit of everybody here, we will exercise 13, a busy session on the personnel issue, but it shouldn't be too long. Okay, anything else? Okay, here none. I have made a motion that we approve the agenda as printed. Motion has been made and seconded by Mr. Rainey and seconded by Mr. Johnson to approve the printed agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We got our word cut out for us. All right, we're ready to go. We've got distinguished characters and citizens in the thing. Not only do we have a prominent Swain, Mr. Conrad Swain. Mr. Conrad's got a prominent first cousin that lives, where do you live, Mr. Swain?
Cordill.
Mr. Thomas lives in Cordill. Right now, I want to introduce Mr. Thomas Swain. Come right up here, if you would, at that station right there. And tell us what you've got on your mind, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Stone. Mayor Stone, thank you for the invitation. The union of distinguished board of commissioners there, thank you for figuring out the matter. My name is Thomas Swain. I live in Cordill, Georgia. I grew up around here, actually. I grew up in West Green. My uncle was Horace Swain. My dad was Thomas Swain. And them boys, Cut Pup, lived around here for, seemed like a hundred years. And I know Hazlerhurst what I used to. I hadn't been around here in thirty years, but I'm very familiar with it.
And Horace Swain was a police officer?
That's correct. That's right here, Mr. Horace. My company, the Flint River Blues Incorporated, started business in 2017. It became a unique business. The idea of the company is to promote blues music all over the state of Georgia. We all love blues music, I think. And we originally started, the concept started being on the Flint River in Albany where it started. The idea is to do blues music up and down the Flint River. The Flint River actually starts in Atlanta, Georgia, in College Park, right up in the airport. So that gives us a wide field to play in from Atlanta, Georgia, all the way down to Baywatch, Georgia. And so, in doing all of that, we run into things. When we run into things, we have to take a strategic look at it, see how it fits and that kind of thing. So we decided to endeavor into this particular event. This particular event is featuring an artist, Willie Spence. Willie Spence is from Coppin County. He was born in Florida, but he lives in Douglas now. He goes to church in Douglas. He's a pretty good kid. He's a young boy, actually. And I say young meaning, he's forty years younger than I am, so that's young, okay? Actually, I taught Willie three drum lessons twenty years ago when I was living around in Coppin County. So I'm familiar with him. My brother's a lot more familiar with him than I am. But Willie, Willie's management decided that my company was a reputable statue. And they decided, they would give us the opportunities to promote Willie throughout the state of Georgia, times three events, but we can expand on that as to how we saw fit. So, you know, as we're developing this strategy, Hazlerhurst came to the picture through one of our newest members there, Sister David Crawley. And she suggested, well, bring it to Hazlerhurst and let me tell you what you can do with it. Okay, fine, let's take a look at that. So in doing that, Zach Johnson's daughter, Deanna Johnson, came to the table, Miss Georgia, 2016. So this is getting to be pretty good. And we decided, well, let's take a look and ask Deanna if she would come and perform with us in addition to Brother Spence here. It took us a few days of negotiating, and Deanna's a pretty good business person, being a young lady. And she decided, well, yeah, we can do that, as long as you pay me good, so we'll do whatever we can. And so, Deanna put her name on the roster, and as the development history goes, and we're pretty glad to have her voice. Willie is a unique talent. Willie sings his butt off, if I can say that. And he almost won American Idol, for whatever reason, I don't see politics or whatever, right? But he won second, first rung up. And, but, you know, some people say, well, he lost. Well, no, he didn't lose, far as I'm concerned. But what happened was the whole world opened up to him. And that gave him an opportunity to go out in the field and do his thing. And he's really, really a great vocalist. I'm not sure if all, all y'all know who he is enough. I've seen some people do it, that's good. In addition to Willie and Deanna, an old friend of mine, I've known him for thirty years. His name is Billy Rigsby. Billy Rigsby is a music educator in Tallahassee. He plays the blues. He's an excellent guitarist and vocalist. So we talked to Billy, and it took quite a long, because we got a reputation with him, we pay him, you know what I mean? And he said, yeah, Tom, I'll come and do that. So we got three artists here we want to bring to concert in Hazlerhurst on August the seventh, at 6:00 p.m. at the Cotton Patch Extreme. And y'all know the Cotton Patch Extreme, that's Ron Patel's place. And Ron is a big supporter, I just bet for Ron. We sat there and played with his dogs and drunk his tea out there on the porch at the house there. And he told me, make sure you mention me, Mayor Stone, Mayor Stone, I mentioned you. I'm not going to hold up most of the time, but we do these things to generate tourism. My company's big on tourism. Tourism is one of the biggest industries in the world. It's very big in Georgia, Georgia's very big on tourism. And let me give you a little bit greater history. The Flint River Blues Barbecue Festival Incorporated is a subsidiary of the Georgia State African American Chamber of Commerce. So we're about business, we're all about business. Music is an industry, so we approach music as an industry. But we use music to bring people, to bring tourism, to bring opportunities, to economic development, simple as that. And so, you know, as a subsidiary, we, these things are connected together. And we kind of find our way in the marketplace, and we do a good thing with it. The event, the first event was 2017. And that gave us a gumption to decide, okay, let's go further with this. And so in 2019, the company became a 501(c)(3) organization. It's actually certified, it's 501(c)(3), but the government re-certified it or classified it as a 509(2)(8) organization. It's still tax-deferred, it's still nonprofit. But they gave us the opportunity to make some money over there, and some money over there, and some money over there. It's different than a 501(c)(3) where it takes donations most of the time only. The 509(2)(8) can sell tickets, it can do several things that a 501(c)(3) can't. But it's still a legitimate organization. So my reason for coming here, well, let's just keep and say, my wife and I formed the company in 2000. My wife, Patricia Swain, if you would stand for a second there. My wife and I woke up in 2014 on a Thanksgiving day and decided, let's do something unique for the communities. And one of the most unique things we could think of was start the organization centered around economic development and bringing real opportunities to the table. So since then, we've done several things, mostly organized. And that's where we are right, and still right now, is organizing. So our reason for coming here this evening, thanks for your time, is to ask the city of Hazlerhurst to sponsor our event. Now here's the flyer of the event. And right now, our name is on top, Flint River Blues Incorporated presents an evening with Willie Spence and friends, is the name of the date. What we would like to see is the city of Hazlerhurst and the Flint River Blues Incorporated present. And that gives you title sponsorship, that means you own the name as well as we do. But we would even give you the first bid on that. And so your name will become synonymous here with that, with the title, and stand out front. For that, there's a cost for that, there's always a cost. That cost is $2,500. With that, we will not only give you the name recognition on every commercial, every advertisement, whether it be printed advertisement, or radio advertisement, or advertising on social media. Our media, our chosen media partner is Broadcast South, that's WBOH. It's been here for a long, long time. And now, it's changed, it used to be, I think it's in country back in the day, but now it's doing R&B and pop music. And it's perfect fit for the event. And so that's our media partner for this area. And that would be pretty much the only media partner for this area, unless we bring in television partner. But radio does it, I think, better than television does for certain things. Not only will we do radio advertisement, we will also do social media advertisement. We have several different professional websites to include our own domain at flintriverblues.com. Also, flintriverblues.org. Both of those are attached to the same website, and they both point in the same direction. And so with that, the $2,500 will get you the name recognition. It will also get you a hundred tickets. And you can use the hundred tickets to give to your employees that come right up there, and everybody else. And as well as the commission, as well as anyone else on your staff or team that you could possibly give a free ticket to. The event has been promoted now, and this is, we're rounding off our first month of advertisement. We've only advertised on social media so far. And the response is very, very, very good. And I think mostly because of Willie Spence being such a hot item in the industry right now. And then locally, Deanna Johnson gets his carries on week two. And we think it's going to be a very successful event. The time for the event is 6:00 p.m. on Saturday evening, and from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the Cotton Patch.
On what day?
August, Saturday, August 7th. And so that's pretty much it, in a nutshell. I can answer any question without worry about it, or any concern.
What's the ticket sale for?
Advanced tickets are $30 apiece.
$30 apiece.
Mayor Stone, tickets at the gate are $40 apiece.
So we're giving our, that'd be $3,000, but the tickets are $30.
We only asked for $2,500 in sponsorship.
Okay, Counsel, you've heard the man, he's wanting to put on an event here, and he's going to be the sponsor, it's going to cost $2,500. Professor Rainey, didn't you say you'd pay that?
Yeah, you can take it out of my page.
It'll take a hundred years. Okay, y'all heard the, Counsel, y'all heard this is Counsel's.
Do you have to have that tonight?
No. No.
Do you have to have that answer tonight?
I will have to have it, but I would actually.
He's getting good here, because they're.
I did have my bubble burst that was there, because I was very excited. Because I accused you of being that far in country, Tennessee, as I walked up.
I understand.
I'm one that loves the blues and Beale Street.
I understand, sacred.
But I said I had my bubble burst that I and some others will not be here that time. I think, now you said August?
August 7th.
August 7th.
Yes, sir.
That's going to be when we start our conference in about a GMA conference.
Okay.
They don't need us. You want to sing?
Well, I'll tell you.
Changed my mind, I ain't going.
No, no.
I hate that I'll miss it, really.
Well, I think it'd be great for the community. I don't know if you have a lot of concerts around here, but people love you. And it's an outstanding event. And it's a gentleman walk presentation, being held every night.
I move that we support this and sponsor.
Got a motion by Mr. Rainey that we become the sponsor of this last event. And Ms. Lincoln, second, any further discussion relative to the promotion of this event? Here you none, I call for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If you're in office.
Very good.
Now then, the only thing, you go ahead and put our name on the thing.
Yes, sir.
And put it all over there.
Yes, sir.
Don't worry about when you're going to get your money.
But we can invoice you, Mayor Stone, we really, really appreciate it on behalf of my company.
We can, I've sort of jostled you a little bit, but we will find money for you, don't worry about that. We'll get it, we're not going to write it tonight. But you can either, if you're back in the area and talking to them, on or some of them, or we can mail it to you in the next day or two.
We can invoice you via social media, PayPal, and if you can pay it that way. But we could be more professional and break and invoice to you.
Well, the gas is rather expensive right now. We'll get your money shortly.
Thank you.
Motion's carried, and we're looking forward to it.
Good.
And really, now, we are, the council is, we haven't been able, because of the COVID thing, our GMA gatherings with the trainings, festivals and all, and centers have been none.
Oh.
The first one we starting back is the very weekend.
Yes, I love, right.
Always folks out here will be here, and we'll do the right thing with tickets.
Good.
And we will appreciate it, we're looking forward to it. And the two stars, the local girl, Deanna, and Willie. Now, you get quite a good talent there, so it's going to be a good event.
It will.
All right, this you've had long enough, we got to.
Thank you very much.
Wait a minute now, I want to know whose film it is, because I won't miss it, I won't see it.
You know, we can arrange that, right?
Where's Rhonda? Who's Rhonda, the female?
She's at Charles.
Charles and Charles.
I won't be here either.
We'll handle all that, Thomas.
And Mayor Stone, one other thing, if we could get you to do a video clip of selfie and say, I'm Mayor Stone, City of Hazlerhurst, and I promise to promote this event, y'all come. That would be great.
He's on his ass.
I'll do it.
You have the questions.
I've got a lot of work to do. Good.
All right, the next, Mr. Attorney, if you take care of this resolution and listen. I know, I've already had some people coming to me that heard that this is fixed to take place. And I've already heard the religious community come to me and giving me holy hell about it. But I'm a Christian man, sometimes I have to ask the Lord for forgiveness. But I'm tired of, and I've checked with the revenue department in Atlanta, a package store in a town of this nature can generate somewhere around $300,000 of revenue a year. And I'm tired of buying my liquor in some other counties. And we want, Mr. Attorney, take.
This is a resolution to seek a referendum to legalize the package sale of distilled spirits within city limits. Whereas the city of Hazlerhurst desires to allow its citizens the opportunity to expand its tax revenue base by approving the package sale of distilled spirits within the city limits if they so choose. Whereas in fullness of such desire, the city of Hazlerhurst may exercise the authority given to local governments by Official Code of Georgia, Section 3-4-41A, to initiate a referendum election allowing its citizens to write the votes to authorize the package sale of distilled spirits, and there increase a new source of tax revenue that is currently being spent in all of the cities and counties neighboring the city of Hazlerhurst instead of within the city of Hazlerhurst. Now therefore, it is resolved that the city of Hazlerhurst pursuant to the power set forth by Official Code of Georgia, Section 3-4-41A, by this resolution hereby gives notice to the appropriate election superintendent to conduct the referendum election in accordance to Official Code of Georgia, Section 3-4-41B, which shall allow citizens of the city of Hazlerhurst to vote whether or not to authorize the package sale of distilled spirits by placing such question on the ballot for the next valid election date and publish a notice there, all as required by Official Code of Georgia, Section 3-4-41C, upon receiving this resolution. It is all followed that the ballot used in any referendum election held pursuant to Code, Section 3-4-41, shall have written or printed there on it, yes, shall.
This is going to be on the ballot?
Shall, you'll have an opportunity to vote, yes, shall the issues of license, shall the issues of license for the package sale, no of distilled spirits be approved, but yes, shall the issues of license for the package sale of distilled spirits be approved? Yes, or no, shall the issues of license for the package sale of distilled spirits be approved?
Be, no, it did not be approved, yeah.
Yeah. The vote is simply yes, no. And those desired to vote in favor of the issues of license shall vote yes. Those desired to vote against the issues of license shall vote no. And set forth from Official Code of Georgia, Section 3-4-42. It's a very simple ballot.
Yeah, a resolution, yeah. And the ballot's very simple, the question, yeah. Okay, Counsel, you heard the resolution had been read, and you know we need to do this. Thomas, we'll see y'all.
Thank you.
You see this, all in favor? No, wait a minute, James, you got a motion yet?
I'll make the motion.
Ms. Lincoln has made a motion that we approve the resolution, it's her second. Seconded it by Mr. Johnson, and thirded by Mr. Rainey, and fourth by Stone. All right? Got a motion, and all the necessary seconds and thirds and whatnot. Now then, any more discussion about it?
Well, I've always felt like the other counties were getting the benefits of the taxes, and we're getting the trash. So, I mean, you know, if we got to clean up the trash, at least we need to get the benefits to go along with it. And if you're a good Christian and you don't buy it, that's me and that's you. I mean, you know, and if you're not, then you're going to buy it from somewhere.
All right, any other discussion relative to the resolution? We're definitely missing the revenue that will be very important to us. But looking out there and seeing her achieve, he may have another source of revenue after he's here too.
My only thing, the whole thing, and I keep bringing it up, I feel like we're going all over again. We have this, I thought, ten years ago.
It got screwed up.
So thank God, and maybe you got it straight, and I go, this was already done, but it's been some ten years ago or longer.
And we've got, let me tell you a little history, and we need to be moving, because we've got a lot of work to do. Before this past legislative session in Atlanta, in order to get this on the ballot, you had to get 10% of your registered voters to sign, go all over town and get people to sign on, to get it. And then you had to send it to the registrar, and she had to go to make sure that all of these people live and vote in the city, which means, Liz, you couldn't sign it or vote on it. A lot of you that live outside the city can't do that. But at any rate, we got it passed in the legislative session this past term that we, as a council, can pass a resolution and do what we just went up to do and tell the registrar to put it on the ballot, and it'll be on the ballot in November. All right, any other discussion? We need to move. All in favor of the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposition? It's ready for mine and the clerk's seat.
I need to talk to the clerk before I fix it.
Okay, you go fix it before we sign it, all right. Okay, let's move along, got that handled. Ms. Clerk, if you would, open, start opening those bids. We put out bids for some street resurfacing, and that's, today was Saturday, I believe. What's your first bid, did somebody write, you got a thing to write it down?
I'm going to let y'all take care of writing it down. I'm going to open these as I receive them. First bid, SWW Construction LLC.
Where, where are they located?
They are out of Surpherton, Georgia.
All right.
Okay.
What is their bid?
That is 1.25 inches.
1.25, okay.
Yes, sir.
One and a quarter inches of asphalt.
Right. On one and a half inches asphalt, 158.
Who's this?
This is SSW, every one of them done one and a half and 1.25.
Okay, who's this bidder?
SWW Construction.
Where are they located?
They are out of Surpherton, it's the same one.
Oh, okay.
Yes, sir. On one and a half, it's 158.
158.
704.
704. This is the same company bid the project with one and a quarter inches of asphalt or one and a half?
Yes, sir.
Okay, what's next?
Next is East Coast Asphalt.
East Coast, okay, out of Douglas?
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, it looks like they did it just one quote, they did not submit two. Theirs is 168.
168.
388.
388.
.50.
.50, and what, how much?
Project is quoted as with a one and a half inch asphalt overlay.
1.1 and a half inch, okay, all right.
Yes, sir. Last bid submitted is Georgia Asphalt Producers, out of Baxley, Georgia. Apparently, they didn't want me to get into this. Their bid is 157,999.75.
What figures?
They did not say.
We can't compare it, we don't know. Did they put the tonnage?
Yes, sir.
Oh, they put the tonnage, okay. Oh, we can, okay, we can compare it, that's the other tonnage. But I don't have any, what's the length of it, all right. Okay, we got the bids, we'll. Okay, we got the bids, we'll, um, we'll.
Uh, I thought we had four bids, uh, but one just refused bid.
There were four sent out.
Yeah, but one did not reply.
All right.
The one that did not reply is, um, East.
That's all right, we need to move along, we, we'll, uh, we've got the bids, and, uh, Council, we will discuss the, uh, the, which, which we want, and I can tell you, we're gonna have to go with the sector later. In some places, it's even gonna take more than that, and we make, but anyway, we'll, the council will handle it. It's open record of what the bids are. All right, let's move on. All right. Okay. Number four is the, um, the Santa Claus money. And, um, we've been told that the COVID money, uh, that it was coming, and we've been anticipating it. And, uh, some of us have been spending it before we get it. And, uh, but any rate, we have finally, it's in our bank account. And we got a total amount of seven hundred and seventy-two thousand, four hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars put in our account. As you know, um, there are stiplifications as to how this money must be spent. Uh, I think that, um, most of us, our, our wish list doesn't work fine. And by the way, this is half of the amount of money we're getting. The rest of the, another half will come approximately, roughly, plus or minus, uh, twelve months from now. So that the, um, our federal government has gone completely crazy. All right, I didn't mean to, I didn't say that, but, but it's on camera, though. The, uh, but the money is needed by, by all means. And I thought a little, and I've been telling everybody, um, well, we look pretty good now, we're catching up. Thomas took too long. I'm fixing to make a little, the mayor's fixing to make a little speech. And I want all of you to know, particularly the department heads around here, that I'm not picking on anybody. You know, I mean, I want you all to know that I'm not picking on anybody. But I want to, um, give you a, a little something, but particularly the council and the, uh, department heads. Um, the, um, I think before I do that, I want to hand out. This is, uh, if you'll notice the sheet, the council that I'm fixing to give you, and, uh, uh, wait a minute, if you'll notice the, uh, the sheet that I'm giving you, at the top of this is June the first, twenty twenty. Uh, Steve, come up here and get, uh, I want you to hand out to all the department heads, and, and through that, that way. Uh, I want, uh, uh, you get one? Uh, I want, um, Chris and Conrad and, uh, you. And who else? Fire chief, chief please. Fire chief. Okay. Give, give up the one, too, he spends too much money.
Chief, I spend more than I got to.
All right, give up, give up, how many you got left?
I've got plenty.
Well, give up, Mary Anne one here, if you don't mind. You Mary Anne one, you got one left there? All right, some of y'all that didn't get, some of y'all that didn't get one, if you want to, ask for your names and let you look at. All right, now that you've got this in hand, everybody got it in hand, I want you to look at, and then you'll be, look at, look at the date. Look at the date up there, the top of the page, June the first, twenty twenty. So we talked about approximately a year ago. The general fund had a balance of negative, the general fund, two hundred and ninety-five thousand, two hundred and eighty-two dollars and forty-five cent. The golf course had a negative balance of a hundred and ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars and forty-three cent. The water and sewer had nine hundred and eighty-seven thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars and eighty-eight cent. But if you check the bank account, there was only four hundred and ninety-three thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars in the bank account. And if you look, um, the water and sewer had almost a million dollars, but there wasn't the four hundred and ninety-three thousand in the bank. If you look up there, the, I, I, the golf course had IOUs to the water department for a hundred and ninety-eight thousand, and the general fund had IOUs, we had spent two hundred, uh, two hundred and ninety-five thousand of, um, of the water and sewer money, which we shouldn't do. So, um, water and sewer, uh, I'll get to my story in just a minute. Now let's get out the next sheet. Um, and let's do the same thing we just done with this one. Steve, come up here and, and get this out, distribute it just like you did the other one. Three. I'll take it. And now, put them out the swingway up there. I'm sorry. Well, I'll see if you get one in just a minute, you'll go back.
I got a picture of her. Steve, hand her.
All right, now then, now if you look at the top of this page, this was July the fifth of twenty, listen, everybody, July the fifth of twenty twenty-one, this is Kirk. Between last year, this time, and this year, the general fund is now, listen to this, seven hundred and forty thousand, is that a hundred and seventy? No, it's, um, my mind is made of light, can somebody read that?
Seven three.
Seven forty what?
Seven.
Seven oh three ninety?
Yes.
The general fund is seven hundred, three quarters of a million dollars in the hole. The, uh, golf course, I mean, the, um, water and sewer fund got a million, two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, three hundred and eight dollars and ninety-two cent, over a million and quarter, uh, billion and a quarter. The golf course is in the hole, two hundred and ten thousand, three hundred and ninety-four. The amount of money in the bank is three hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. Wonder why there's only three hundred and seventeen thousand dollars in the, in the water, the water and sewer got a million, two hundred and sixty-eight thousand? Why? Because the general fund owes water and sewer seven hundred and forty thousand, and the golf course owes water and sewer two hundred and ten thousand. Y'all, this is one heck of a mess. Now then, we about two, three years ago, uh, got into trouble in, in cash flow. And y'all sent me to the bank, if you remember, we had to borrow money. Well, y'all gave me the authority to hang on a little bit, and we went to one, two, and then the third year without having to borrow any money. But now let me tell you something, we borrowing from ourselves, and this is the story I wanted to tell you. And it's, I've already told my story in a way with just what I've given you. A fella had a good job, and he was doing good, making money with his family, had a family. And they were doing so well, they were driving an old car. Now, I don't know, somewhere, it'd be started in January, and about to, um, March or April somehow, he, he was talking with his wife, and his family said, you know, we're doing so good, if y'all hang on and don't spend too much, I think at Christmas time, we're gonna, our families go get a new car. And, um, so that they were all excited, the family was looking forward to, um, go save and, and, and take that old car and get rid of it and get a new car. Well, about mid-year, uh, man lost his job. And, uh, circumstances brought about that he was destined, oh, here he was, um, doing pretty good. And he planned on buying his family a new car for Christmas, and they were looking forward to it, and all of a sudden, he's out of job. But this fellow's name was Sam. And Sam had a twin brother. And his twin brother was a, a blooming, well-done businessman and was making money. And so, he's, he's twin, and his twin loved him. So the twin brother just wasn't gonna let him lose his house and not be able to pay his life bill, do things, so the, the twin, the twin brother, uh, put money in his account and had him go. And, um, uh, I think they had a little, and wife, they had a little part-time job, but, uh, there's very little money, and he needed a little extra money this, but the twin brother had enough money that he took care of his twin. Well, the end of the year, when the Sams and the families kept on, uh, buying a new car, things had gone well, he lost his job. And, um, Santa Claus came, and he had hung stockings for his children, he wasn't expecting much, but in his blooming stocking was a big sum of money. Santa Claus had left him a bunch of money. Now then, should Sam pay Carl, his twin brother, or should he buy the new car? And he's taken him, and the, the twin brother that was making money has hit his twin. Uh, and what I'm saying is, and another thing, some of you, the department heads, said, oh, I've got this in my budget, I've got this in my budget, I've got this in my budget. Well, I have a, I have a, let me say this too, that I want to tell you initially. But these two papers that I gave you, first one with, um, uh, the, uh, the small amount of June of last year, do you know that I didn't get a copy of this every month? I got this in June, and I got this in July. We didn't get financial statements during this COVID thing for a full year. No, no, they were, but I did do this, cuz I knew, you know, listen, I knew that it was treacherous, that we were in a, in a tough situation. And what I would do, and this is, uh, I'm a fool, so I'm all embarrassed, I almost oughtn't have to tell you. But after we had paid bills, and you know, every month, we sign a check and send it out here for fifty-five thousand dollars a month. We pay full payment on all our employees' health insurance. And every month, send a fifty-five, and then this, oh, Lord, uh, it just goes on and on and on, shit, fences there. Well, what I would do when the, when the, I'd keep up with them, and they give me a tape, and, and I've signed all these, and I've signed all these checks here. I'd take that amount, and I'd give it to them, to the, they'd put another stack of all over the checks that high. And I knew this stack that had time to clear. I'd go down there to the bank and see what the bank balance was, when I started signing these. So I didn't get this financial report, but I kept it up with what was in the bank, I had to. And, um, so I knew the circumstances from June of twenty twenty. And the circumstances, and I knew what was going on here. And, um, and this folks, council, I'm informing the public, but now let me tell you what, the monkey is right here. It wasn't asphalt, but now monkey's on our back. We cannot continue, or either the public court can come and, and, uh, not wait till the next election, will come down and, uh, how do you, um, get rid of? Y'all. How do you get rid of us? If we can't do any better than this now, we'll not be here. This is going far enough. Now something has got to happen. The water, uh, water and sewer is doing good. And the general fund is seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, a quarter of a million in the hole. And, and it's gotta be taken care of. And if you don't think that's serious, you, you can stop the poll about it just a little bit. Now, we're not gonna have to borrow any money this year. Thank goodness, our twin brother had pretty good income and had enough money to keep us in hock, out of hock. And we've got the, um, four hundred, no, we've got the, uh, where's the other one here? We've got three hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. Now our next heavy cash flow will come in here in October. October fifteenth, we'll get to around three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. If one month's some, that can be used in the general fund. Uh, also, every month, every month, twin brother, water and sewer gets a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars every month, July, yeah. Uh, folks that come in to pay their bill out there, bring it in handy for these ladies, and they take that, uh, bill, and they, uh, every month, water and sewer, unless they get some other money as well, the water and sewer is gonna get a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars every month. Now then, the, uh, street department with garbage and trash is gonna get fifty thousand dollars every month. So with that fifty and the hundred and twenty-five that the brother's got in the, in the, in the street department is getting fifty thousand, that's a hundred and seventy-five thousand that's coming each month. We've got, we're starting off now with, um, three hundred and seventeen. And with that coming in, uh, we've got July, August, September, and then October fifteenth, that three hundred, about three hundred and twenty-five thousand is coming in. I think with our income, what we've got, you know, we still, we in hock, we, we, we in debt, bad. I think with that, and the other little bit of incomes coming in, I think we can survive and get to, uh, to October, and then when October comes, November decent, and then we start getting that blower tax of half a million dollars. So I think we gonna sweat it out. And y'all not gonna have to send me to the bank to borrow it out. But now we cannot run, uh, one department as well as we do in water and sewer and general, and they have, by the way, they have to be held separated by law. By law, it's gotta be. And, uh, I think if somebody knew that we were dipping in water and sewer for the two to three quarters of a million dollars, uh, they might slap our hand about it.
Everybody knows that.
Well, I meant partially, uh, planned it that way. It's time that, uh, we're, uh, we're put on the spot to know that we got to run a better ship. Now, the, um, and we, we can't use the, uh, COVID money, the, the, uh, seven hundred and something thousand we got the other day. That's designated for special use, and it ain't for operating these banks. So, um, but now here's the thing that can be done, here's what, I ask you the question now. Since, um, Carl carried Sam to Christmas, should, um, should, uh, Sam buy the car? And you just taking the hock to, uh, to Carl, what I'm telling you is that that COVID money was put there because of COVID, because of the deficits that we're running in here. Uh, uh, see, the, the revenue, if you've been getting these statements, we're not, uh, we had a balanced budget last year. But the revenue didn't come in because of the circumstances with COVID, there's a long time. Uh, how long do we go without even cutting anybody off, uh, on water bill?
From March to, we started cutting off January this year.
Well, we went a long time, we didn't collect the dime. Uh, how long did we go, uh, Chief Williams, that we didn't have a, a, a court trial?
A long time.
Uh, we, um, so what I'm asking you folks to do, uh, I want us to look at this COVID money, this seven hundred thousand. And if we can find out in that anything that's legal that will cover this reason we're in this mess to agree, I want us to sit down and look hard at what we need to do to pay Carl back. Our twin brother back there, Carl, we used seven hundred something thousand of the money. And then, with this money that we got, and with the other seven hundred something thousand that's coming in in about a year, I think we'll still be okay, but thank the good Santa Claus to come, we definitely need him bad. But I, before the money got in the bank, I think it, it, it was almost in the bank, and everybody was up here spending. And it burnt me up, as you can probably tell. We need to sit down and see what we're doing, look at what's going on. Now then, you've heard my statement, and who else wants to talk a little?
I, I want to take the stand now. At, uh, this point, I, I do want to tell you how I enjoyed your story, I'm not real sure whether it was a novel or a fairy tale. At this point, I do want to tell you how I enjoyed your story. I'm not real sure whether it was a novel or a fairy tale. But at the same time,
A fairy tale.
It's my poor now. At the same time, we look at this thing, we cannot look at this relief program as to take care of our past mistakes. We've made those mistakes and we should have been paying it off, just like any other loan that we would have had any other time. We failed it. This can still be rectified as we come along, but it's not to say this Santa Claus fund is coming to bail us out. I do remind us that we used one earlier that bailed our tails out, and this is not one. We have already passed a motion here in council earlier that fifteen hundred dollars, when it came in net, was to be paid to all employees. And this has already been passed. It's not something for argument. Now, unless it be a rescind that is there, this must be done. It should be signed, and the checks I know are on your desk, and should be signed and given to all employees at this time. At that point, we can start to evaluate all of the things that are different departments, that the COVID money or this relief money says is legal, that we can use it. Now, we do know we're going to have this one again that will come at the first of the next year before we do that. But this is not magic one to cure our problems that we created ourselves. And I'll hush.
Well, I too do everything I can and have, in all the years I've been here, to get the salary and the benefits to the employees as high as I can get them. And we do get good employees. I do my best to properly get you all to agree to compensate them properly. And I, if anybody is for this staff, and I'll say this, I've been here twelve years. And, you know, or will be soon. And we've got some good people. I'm, we've got some good talent, and we're trying to compensate them well. Now, the thing though, that I want you to, and I'm not opposed to the, they're on my desk and I intend to put my signature on. But if they would come to put it on my desk before the blooming money could hardly get in the bank and start spinning it.
The money was already there, well, Mr. Mayor, don't try to fool people. It was already in the bank at the time those checks were written and put on your desk.
The, no, it wasn't.
I thought they gone a long weekend.
It was already deposited.
I was there and got the blooming bank statements. I got one of them and got the woman to run me off a copy of it. She said, we're gonna be putting it in tomorrow. And the next day, if it hadn't been, and when the checks were written, it may have been at about the same time. But what I'm trying to tell you, y'all should damn well be spending the money. You ought to slow down a little bit using common sense. We hadn't been using it.
Common sense is not common, but we did make that motion. It passed and that's gone.
But here's the point, and I intend for that to happen. I'm going, I'm going to y'all, or to me, or to directly me to sign the checks, and I'm going to sign them. I don't have any problem with that. I do have a problem with this, not sitting down and studying what the hell, what kind of position we in, and why we can't do something. And another thing too, that I hope for the employees, I'm for you, and all of you know that, everyone of you. But now let me tell you something. They hadn't missed a blooming paycheck. They hadn't missed a check during COVID, not a one.
I remind you too, as you do say that, the public education system here in Jeff Davis County was the same way. They did not miss a blooming paycheck either. And they were also compensated at the fifteen hundred dollar rate through COVID on the first time it came through, when everybody else was doing it.
That's fine too. That's a heck of a note. When you got, you educators get your full paycheck, you need to get that too. Y'all didn't need it either.
Well, I'm tired.
I, I, I prompted up when we first started talking like this. And I asked you, y'all go back to the, let's get a list of how we're gonna handle this money.
That's all I mentioned.
Where we gonna put it, put it, and make sure we didn't co-mango with the general fund. But Mr. Bernice said, it won't be no problem for us to handle. So, in all of that, everybody has worked good through this situation. And the police department and all of us got our hands together like we should, like a community should, like a council should. They sacrificed, they done away with the car and thing to make sure we balanced the budget, what was ultimate to the council right then. We agreed, if they did that, we would do X. Then Mr. Ramy brought it up about fifteen hundred dollars. But whatever it is, I definitely concur with the mayor also, that before we spend, we need to know what we're doing. But all of it has already been set. We got more that's gonna come in and we're gonna, we're gonna do fine. But we have to be together when it comes, I mean, when these things come about. Once the money is him, one person can't hold it, three people can't spend it. It's got to be for everybody. And we got to put our heads together. We have done right. We have done right. The board has done right. The mayor has done right. And now that it's, let's go ahead and do what we've been doing. I mean, what we said we were gonna do. When this other come in, if you, if you got to put a tight range on it, because you're the man, according to the honor that holds the first frame, you the one that's got to know what that money is, know what can happen. Put a tight rope on it.
I don't have any problem at all with what we've done, what y'all are doing. But for us to sit here and start writing, we need to get, this, you need to know what I gave you tonight.
True.
And you need to spend a little bit, and not be, so I want everybody to get the check. I think we go, I said to begin with, I think we're gonna be able to do all this. But for us to sit here like drunk sailors and start writing checks in this mess going on, I don't know what's gonna happen. That too.
That's what you say. You don't want to get sawed in and I kick up.
Nobody's even supposed to voice that I am.
I notice to be cognizant of that, that motion is already passed and is to be done for that.
It didn't say, you didn't say, well, spend it before it got to the code in the bank.
It said, spend it when it came in, I believe, is what the motion said. And it's in, check's sitting there for your signature.
I'm gonna, let me tell you what, I'm enough of a team player that you folks make decisions, I don't.
I remind you of that.
Hell, you don't have to.
I protect you from running my office.
I, I'm gonna do, you folks are the boss. But at the same time, I'm not gonna let you keep running the damn kind of show you've been running. You need to get your butt down and figure out what the heck's going on. All right.
You're running the show. You the captain of the ship, you'll be.
Well, I'm trying to be a good one. I'm trying to be a good one. All right, I think we've worked this to death, and I'm sorry, folks, but I had, I put up with it, looked at it, sweated with it, month by month by month, and overdrafts, and I'm, I put the monkey on the old back. And I think that everybody was covered there. All right, let's move on. Enough of that. All right, Remy, I think that what we just discussed, okay, you through with that. All right, this, does the proclamation for Mr. Pansley need to be, we're turning?
We're skipping number six. And I understand that Commissioner Bloodworth is.
That's why I said proclamation for Mr. Pansley.
It's the rename, we go, movie street.
Mine says six, your proclamation is, I forgot the wrong thing again.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Bloodworth asked this to go before council. If you will look at the screen, you will see I have a measurement of approximately two hundred and eighty something feet. It is only in front of the Lances' house. That is what they would like to consider renaming. And I told him that I would bring this up to the council tonight since he is absent. Also, you have a handout from Q Public where I did the measuring, as well as a city map. So if y'all want to put this on Thursday night, but I did tell him that I would bring this up.
I, I think we need to put on what Thursday night.
Yes, sir.
Include him.
Yes, sir.
All right, then we can move on. All right, have I got the right copy now? All right, no proclamation for July. This is it right here. Okay, all right. This briefly, council and public. Mayor and council make the proclamation. All of you know Mr. Joe Pansley and his foundation is a nonprofit organization that tries to build and help young people. And we've always helped him every year. I always try to give him a little money, can't give him a lot. But we do that to help him. We let him use the Civic Center on the July the seventeenth for handing out his awards and all. It says, on behalf of the city council of Hazelhurst and the citizens of the city of Hazelhurst, I, our based on mayor, do hereby declare July the seventeenth, twenty twenty-one as the Joe Lee Hansley Foundation Day in the city of Hazelhurst and applaud the foundation for the contributions to the entire community and surrounding region. In witness thereof, I have hereto set my hand this day. This made for all of us to sign, not only me, but the entire council. So entertain a motion that we approve the proclamation amending Joe Lee Hansley Foundation.
I'll promote.
Mr. Johnson has made the motion. Say goodbye, Mr. Remy. Any further discussion? You're not, I call for the little, if I ever say aye. It's unanimous. Proclamation is clear to Mr. Berne, if you will get all of our signatures on it. I appreciate it. All right, let's move on. Now then, according to in the Food and Wine Festival.
It was scheduled.
It's rescheduled. What can you tell us about it, since you're back there?
We had some organizational issues with who was gonna be hosting the festival. And our presenter, who's organizing the festival, recommended that it be moved back to make sure that we had all the proper licensing and time to schedule everybody as needed. So we just moved it back, October twenty-second, twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, same date, same time, same locations. Just a date change.
The, when was it first scheduled?
September twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth.
Yeah, yeah, just moved it back. Actually, it'd be a little better fall weather.
That's right, that's right.
That'll be good. Okay, that's just information only, right? All right. Okay, now then, the next thing I think we want to do, and then we'll probably, hey, we go pretty good. I like it. Speak up and shut up and start fucking, use an hour. We're almost gonna do that. Except for, we had a bad weekend, didn't we, Steve?
Yes, sir.
Didn't we, Opie?
Yeah, we had it. I think we thought.
Well, and Ms. Bernice has got these photographs for you here on this. It was put on Facebook that a family from Virginia, I believe is correct, were visiting their relatives in Baxley. And they brought their little children up to, because we've got the famous best water park in the whole region. And they brought their children up to the water park several days ago, apparently around the fourth or fifth of, because when we got the notice, it said for the last three days. So we got the notice on Saturday, so if you go back Friday, Thursday, Wednesday, somewhere is when they visited the city. And they said that for the last three days, no one knows what my kids have been suffering. And I wouldn't want anybody to go through it. And they've got hoof and hand, whatever, mouth disease or something from the dangerous water park and put it all on Facebook. Is that about what happened? Okay. We, Mary Ann immediately put it on there for us to, for people to know about it. We put aside it like we should. And we started trying to figure out what to do. And then somebody called Oscar, which is, could be Oscar, is a sanitaryian, to handle things of this nature. And he got with us and Mr. Remy got involved and I got Opie and Stephen. We got Opie over there to pull a sample, check, see if the chlorine and other chemical constituency of the water was what it should be and for good health of the children playing there. And we, now the water park is closed down. Steve and his group and helpers are sanitizing it, cleansing it. And the sanitaryian, Mr. Oscar Hewlett, is doing his thing. And as soon as we all ensure that everything is like it should be, we'll open it back up. I will say this, and I'm, and Opie, I want Opie to talk a little bit, because he's our chemist and our person that can run, run the samples and check everything. Go ahead, Opie, tell us what you found.
Well, we went out there, I found a trace of free chlorine in it on the day we thought there wasn't.
What does that mean, Opie?
That means there was still chlorine active in the water.
Okay.
I got back to the lab, I did a total chlorine, and it was a one point eight nine.
What does that mean, Opie?
That means there was adequate chlorine near to disinfecting any bacteria in the water.
All right.
I run a total color form, I run E coli, and I run a fecal color form. All of them come up negative.
So, so let me interrupt you now. Thank you for helping me. So you tested the, by the way, there's an underground reservoir and this water is recirculated, so like with the swimming pool, and runs through a filter system. And our people check it and make sure that this is correct. So all of the water that was in the reservoir going through the filter system into all the little things that somewhere begins to play under, that water was clean.
That water was clean. And I wasn't saying that anybody, that's clean.
Now then, here's where we may have some liability. That water park, this council, the city of Hazelhurst, built that thing, and we've got three hundred thousand dollars in it. Now, this was built with money that, it ain't just seven hundred and forty-two thousand. It was way before then, and out of different funds. But we've got three hundred thousand dollars approximately in that water park, and it's a nice one. We got it sitting on land that we don't own. We don't own a piece of land out there where that water park is and be the postage stamp. The postage stamp is about that big. We don't even own a postage stamp out there. But yet, we spent three hundred thousand dollars putting this splash pad out there. But now, we thought, when we were doing that, that the red department that owned that land was gonna deed, that we were already invested three hundred thousand dollars. And we thought that when they turned it over, that the, the powers that be that had held possession of that thing for fifty years would deed it to the city or county, at least respect our portion of our investment out there. But no, they needed the whole thing to the county. Now, the county is supposed to give us an easement on it. That has never happened. So here, to show you, we're not only foolish about how we spend our money, we're foolish about how we invest some of it, we've gone and sold on someone else's property. But as we were being, going through the process, and we had some legal help at that time, it's not, this gentleman sitting here. We had some legal help at that time, and all this was supposed to work out so that we were gonna, I surveyed it. I've got a plan. You may not know, but I'm a registered manager there. I went out there and got us an entrance from Farmer Street into the park, around it, out to the thing, back up to, almost to the bathrooms and back around, and got it ready for the county to deed us, and I gave it to them, and it ain't never been, thing done with it. So we're, but now the ground, see, the reason I tell you this, is the ground where people park and all out there and it come and go, it's grass. There's a lot of water there and it rains. So I think to a degree, that's our, that's not, that's our splash pad. And when those kids get out there barefoot and run through that water in the yard, the frogs and the rabbits and stray dogs and everything else, fecal material is out there on the grass, the bear does what in the woods? And so you can't, you can't handle that. Mark, you got anything to say about that?
No, no, sir.
What?
No, sir, I don't have anything. You're, you're right on target.
So, go ahead, Opie.
Well, even then, this water that comes off this splash pad and runs off, it's got chlorine in it. We tested the drainage ditch, the actual dirt drainage ditch off the ground.
Okay.
You had a forty-four fecal in it and a fifty-six E coli, and that would pass even a discharge into the river.
So, so what we're saying now, if the couple from Virginia's come to Baxley and come, because we got, they got a little water park of their own down there. They don't have what we got, so they come to sent flag to the area. And so they come up here, all right, now then, Sheriff, Steve, all of you, you heard of anybody else having a problem? And there's about thirty-five or forty or more children out there every day.
My kids go all the time.
So we'll say that they must have been there about last Wednesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
And we had run them all Sunday.
And when they, when they made us close it, had them run them full.
We were out there then.
So it's been six days and nobody but this one family has said that they got this disease from our park.
Ms. Bernice has got a thing on that.
Or they brought it from Baxley, is all I can.
Ms. Bernice, have you, show him that she took it?
I'm going to read something that come from the center of, uh, Center for Disease Control and Prevention. Causes and transmission. Hand, foot, and mouth disease spreads easily through person-to-person contact, respiratory droplets containing virus particles when an infected person coughs or sneezes, contact with contaminated surfaces and odors, okay? The virus can be spread to others through an infected person's nose and throat secretions such as salivodrool and, or nasal mucus, fluid from blisters or scabs, or feces. It is not the same thing as hoof and mouth disease in animals, it is totally different.
Well, send me for two handed, a little, if you can get that.
Make it a week that up anywhere and spread them up from kids.
So can we blame the splash pad for COVID too?
We can, if y'all want to. Why not, just get, be right, no, why not, just give blame.
Okay, what we, what else needs to be said about this now?
Had a pause for a while while we were looking at it. I did get the call and I went off out there. But, uh, to my evaluation of it, we have gone above and beyond, uh, where I don't think we really had, and it's my opinion. I don't think that we really had a problem as it was somebody sounding a bell that we could have had a problem. Uh, and anytime you've got an alarm that goes off like that, I think we took appropriate action. Uh, we did shut it down, it's been, uh, steam cleaned, uh, we've gone and taken all the samples, which have proven that there was nothing there, uh, at the time or at the present. Um, I, I'd like to commend all of our employees for taking, uh, very much an accurate role in getting it done.
Well, we have just heard and discussed it before this meeting started. We're gonna do two things to make sure that that thing stays coordinated. We're gonna direct wire the coordinator to the, to the pump. Anytime that pump comes on, it's gonna be feeding chlorine in, and we're gonna put, put fluid in there. And we can check it every day, but I'm gonna make sure that it's gonna be forwarded and that works. They said it could go up to nine, but I, I, I think that's a little bit of a trend.
Did I forget a report?
Well, he ta- he tested a total color form at the same time I did, and, and I went off three of them, I, I guaranteed it's fine.
All right, one other thing, if we're gonna, if you all wanna go, we got a little personnel out there, it's, um, um, it's, it's not gonna take long and I don't think y'all will be able to buy it, but we got to have it. Um, do you want, okay, wait just a minute, uh, Steve. The other thing, um, that, uh, y'all, this is again, where folks were spending money. And, uh, if you remember, it came in here to, uh, with this famous generator, the state patrol coach. I was dealing, I was dealing with the state patrol officers that come here that we deal with with construction. I was dealing with them in Atlanta. And, uh, I knew that the man was gonna get paid for his generator. Uh, we had, it was something that was added on to us later that Charles and I did have it in our budget. And I told them months ago that they had to pay for it. And, um, so I knew that the man was gonna be paid for the generator. And I knew that we were not gonna have to pay for it. I knew that I was gonna be handled. But if it came in here, well, we owe the man the money, let's pay it. I, well, we seven hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars overdrawn, who you, where you gonna pay it with? Get more of the, the, your brother's money? And I said, I, all y'all voted to, go pay the bill. Well, I knew how the bill was gonna be paid, and I voted no. Well, now, the Atlanta has called me, they're gonna pay for the generator, just like I knew they would. They've, uh, had those, uh, Tim out there at, uh, Triple H to break it down into two bite-sized pieces. One of them is for twenty-four, uh, nine hundred and one is for, uh, twenty-four, five hundred and sixteen. They called and told me, they got us registered now as a, as a supplier or vendor of, uh, in other words, we can send an invoice to this department and they'll write a check, and we were not, uh, set up as a vendor. And now they can write a check and pay us. So we've, we've, uh, Tim and I talked to Mr. Strickland there several days ago and we got through with this. And now they've got it broken down so that, uh, now we can invoice, uh, Atlanta, the city, not, we, we, this invoice is to us. As soon as we pay these two invoices and we invoice the state, they write us a check and pay us. So we've got the thing handling, like, we're gonna be handling to start with it. And if y'all left me alone, we wouldn't have the damn mess we had.
I'd like to say that I commend you for, uh, getting this, uh, done and on behalf of self and, uh, the board. Uh, we had faith in you, but we needed to make sure that the people at local are paid, uh, when we say that it's gonna be done.
Well, y'all like to light a fire under my ass.
And that, I think that was wrong.
Please, Thomas, chief.
Y'all, y'all, uh, y'all, uh, see what you get. I, I called it like I sees it. All right, uh, we got going executive session, we need a motion, Mr. Johnson.
I'll promote you.
Mr. Johnson made a motion to go into executive session, seconded by, seconded by Ms. Leggett. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We'll be back in just a few minutes.